It is 7:30. We will call our May 2, 2022 Little Falls City Council meeting to order. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and herein place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Storey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of April 18, 2022 and the regular meeting of April 18, 2022. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Conoffla, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 106601 through 106673 totaling $386,654.62. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljagren, second by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Donation. Flags. American Legion Post 46. Accept. Alex Warzekka.
Hi, good evening, Council Administration. Thank you very much for letting me in on your meeting tonight. I've got two things for you. First is a, well first, my name is Alex Warzekka, Commander for Little Falls American Legion. And we have been helping support the Flag Bridge project. And so we've got a new box of flags with all the different service branches and stuff, kind of like this, but I left the big box outside. And the second one, we're just very fortunate and happy that you guys are still supporting our different park projects. So the first one northwest of Coburns, the Little Falls Legion Park back there, and also our park over by the post office. And so we just want to say thank you and on behalf of the membership, we have a monetary donation here for you to the city of Little Falls for your Parks and Recreation Department. So that is all I have at this time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What is the wish of the council?
A motion to accept the flags and monetary donation from the American Legion Post 46.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Certificate of appreciation. Tim Tabit, firefighter, mayor and chief.
Thank you, Council President. We have Tim Tabit here tonight. He's retiring as of tomorrow from the fire department. He's been with the department for 35 years, joined April 1 of 1987. He's served in numerous roles. Currently, he's the first Assistant Chief. Prior to that, he was second Assistant Chief and captain for a spell. So his leadership to the firefighters has been invaluable. He's going to be really hard to replace, but we want to wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you.
Tim, congratulations on your retirement. I had the fortune of getting to know Tim and his wife Renee through Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and also with interviewing firemen for the city of Little Falls. Great man. Thank you for your service to your country. Thank you for your service for our community. Thirty-five years is quite the dedication and you've set a great example for a lot of people.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Zach's going to get a picture of Tim.
So I will definitely miss, I'm also the treasurer for the fire department currently, and I get to come and see the ladies here at the office here to present them with checks every now and then from the fire department. So I'll still maybe stop by once in a while just to see you, but I won't have a check. I do want to say one thing. On behalf of my wife, I couldn't have done 35 years of fighting fire without the support, without the support of my wife and my family. Thank you so much.
I think we should give her a round of applause.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Appoint seasonal golf groundskeepers. Approve. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, April 2022. Receive. Letter of retirement. Tim Tabit, firefighter. Receive. Medallion hunt, Mid-Minnesota Federal Credit Union Dam Festival. Approve. On sale, on sale Sunday and 2:00 AM liquor license. Leroy and Linda Neus doing business at Tavern on First LLC. Approve. Permanent structure sale of fireworks license. Coburn's Marketplace. Approve. Permanent structure sale of fireworks license. Walmart Supercenter. Approve. Police report. March 2022. Receive. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I move to receive and accept the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Liljagren. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearings and lettings. Letting. Playground equipment. Parks. Award. Greg.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. In front of you this evening, we have a quote from Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground out of Golden Valley for additional playground equipment. In 2021, we did budget for playground equipment. We reserved $45,000 for that. We also received a $10,000 matching grant or matching donation for Gamrot Park and an additional $5,000 from the West Side Improvement Association. And so this evening, we are asking the council to award the bid from Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground out of Golden Valley for that playground equipment. We'd be looking at three zip lines, one at Columbia Park, one at Gamrot Park, and then one at, where's the other one? Playground Park. And then the playground equipment would go in Gamrot Park. So this evening, we are asking the council for approval.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Conoffla, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hold business. Ordinance number 31-7th series. Amend city code, chapter 11, section 11.03. Interim uses. Introduced for 1822. Adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. So ordinance number 31 is to amend city code to allow for interim uses. If you look at actually the 31A, which is the shortened version of 31, it basically lays out what we're looking at doing with 31. Interim uses are basically land uses that currently are not allowed in our code, but are for temporary use on it to kind of see how it works with the surrounding area. So it does have a sunset date, so you can have this used for so long, and then it would expire at that point, just to see how it works. We did run this through the planning commission. The planning commission voted in favor to move this forward, and so this evening, we are asking the council as well to approve ordinance number 31 for interim uses.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to adopt ordinance number 31-7th series. Amend the city code, chapter 11, section 11.03. Interim uses.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Storey. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 31A-7th series. Authorized summary publication of ordinance number 31. Interim uses. Introduced for 1822. Anything to?
This is just the summary of 31.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Conoffla, second by Councilmember Liljagren. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
New business. Wabash National LP. Number one, public hearing. Submittal of Minnesota Investment Fund application. Ratify and confirm.
Yes, members of the council, Council President. We had a discussion in a meeting with Wabash a couple of weeks ago. They are considering a potential expansion here in Little Falls and have requested the city apply for a Minnesota Investment Fund grant on their behalf. So we have some time constraints in this, so we are asking and have called for a public hearing for next Monday, May 9, at 6:30 here in the council chamber. So just looking for ratify and confirmation of the call of that public hearing.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion to ratify and confirm.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Storey. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would just add thanks to Wabash for considering another great investment into our community.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2022-38. Call for public hearing business subsidy. Ratify, confirm, and adopt.
Yes, so in conjunction with the MIF application, the Minnesota Investment Fund grant application, if that were to be awarded by the state, that is considered a business subsidy and we are required to have a business subsidy in conjunction with the grant public hearing. So again, we're looking for ratify and confirm the public hearing for the business subsidy next Monday at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to ratify and confirm resolution 2022-38. Call for public hearing on a business subsidy.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-39. Bank placement. Public improvement 389. Adopt.
Yes, as we discussed in the work session this evening, we are looking at doing a bank placement for our 2022 Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund bond that would fund the 2021 petition projects. Jason Murray of David Drown Associates is here. He can explain the process of the bank placement and the reason why we're looking at going that direction rather than doing a negotiated sale this year.
Mr. President, members of the council, as I stated earlier, we're trying to lock in before any of the anticipated interest rate heights with the Fed later this week. So taking out the process from a competitive sale and moving to a bank placement. So with that, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd recommend to the council, award the sale of a bank placement to, in the amount of $2,856,000, to Webster Bank at an interest rate of 3.3%. This is a 15-year, just over 15 years, full term with 15 years, I should say, just over, slightly over 15 years because of capitalized interest, but 15 years on special assessments. You are pledging with this resolution. You are pledging tax levies and special assessments towards the payment of the bond, and this is a full faith and credit of the city. With that, Mr. President, I'll pause. Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-39. Bank placement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Conoffla. Any discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Request for funding. Riverbank Morrison County Historical Society. Consider.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Councilman President Hurcock and Mayor Zilka and councilpeople. With me tonight are two board members, Chris Erickson and Peter Ekstrom, who are our Morrison County Board members. And the Charles A. Warehouser Memorial Museum, which houses the Morrison County Historical Society, has been hit by a series of major rain events, the first in the spring of 2015, the most recently on June 29, 2020. Both events caused a massive slide of the riverbank along our shoreline into the Mississippi River. We are asking the city of Little Falls to partner with the county of Morrison to fund an engineering design and also to contribute funds towards a grant that would put the design into construction, ultimately repairing and stabilizing our riverbank. The county commissioners will be voting on the resolution to fund $140,000 of the targeted $210,000, which is combined total for the engineering design and grant. The $140,000 from the county will be 2/3 of that total. The reception by the county commissioners, in my estimation, was positive. So on the 10th, I fully hope that they will pass it. But we are asking the city of Little Falls to partner with the county with a third match of $70,000, which will fund the engineering design and the grant partnership. Morrison County Historical Society will contribute $3,000 with another $4,000 or more in fundraising. I have approached Minnesota Power for funding towards construction. And as of Friday, I got a, we don't do that kind of work or granting. They realized that I had approached quite a few different people in Minnesota Power, and they finally got one person to be the bad guy and say, no way. That was a public relations person, Amy Curtis, who got back to me. Though I've spoken to Ron Creisha this afternoon, and he said he's still going to pursue this, and he was going to talk to the lobbyist, who is Thor Underdahl, who lobbies at the state Capitol. And he's still going to talk to him there. And we're going to be continuing to approach other funders, and Ron Creisha is working to find more partnership dollars at the state level. And when we get the design done, I will be talking to the Warehouser family about contributing more towards this as well, towards the granting part of it. And I want to thank you for hearing me tonight and for your help. Any questions?
Any ballpark given by anybody on what the actual cost of construction might be?
Yes, yes. And that's kind of what we're using basically on the design portion of it, as well as, we had three proposals. This one by Ultegh, who is quite a large corporation, gave us a grand total with the design of $596,160,000. And the design cost is $77,760. The construction total is $518,400,000. I think I provided this in one of your earlier packets too, so that you can take a look at that as well.
Mr. President, you're looking in some other options that are?
When we get to the granting portion, yes, we're pursuing other options as far as providing. We probably, some of them we might not need, but the granting people really like to see partnerships in the community towards something like this. And there is a level atop on, there's two different grants that we'd be looking at. And one is with Clean Water. The other is the Conservation Partners Legacy Grant Program. One requires a 10% match, the other is 25%.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, John, if we did approve this, where in the budget would this come from?
Likely would have to come from our equipment fund or other undesigned dollars yet. We, you know, we do have our ARP dollars that we have not designated, but we haven't fully received that. We've only received the first half of the payment. But there is undesigned dollars within the, or surplus funds within the equipment fund that likely we would be able to utilize.
Thank you.
Council President, it says consider. So are we actually voting on this tonight or are we just considering it?
I don't know. I was just going to ask that.
We as staff didn't have formal recommendation on this. This is a fairly unique situation, you know, with the condition of the natural environment causing this disruption on the riverbank. And, you know, we don't have any other programs formally that, to create and adopt this for, you know, so it's, this is really new to us. So we didn't feel in a place to provide any recommendations. So at this point, it's, you know, I lean to you guys, the council, to either consider it based on the request that's already been made or, you know, direct us for further discussion or interest or, you know, what exploration or whatever you want. I know it has been something that you have supported looking into, but not to the level where we've actually said we're going to help finance portions of this project.
Well, Council President, I would like to make a motion that we help the Morrison County Historical Society by donating $70,000 to this project.
Could we make that a condition on the county contributing?
Yes, condition, yeah.
That would work.
If the county does it, we'll do it too.
Smart move.
Then I would second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka, to contribute $70,000 contingent upon the county's participation as well. Any discussion?
I guess, Mr. President, I'd like to see this be funded entirely by the county. As a city, we, our residents would be contributing twice, once as a county taxpayer and then once again as a city taxpayer. It's the Morrison County Historical Society, not the Little Falls Historical Society. I know something needs to be done. I've been down on the river there. Wouldn't bother me that my county taxes are going to this. I even looked at the overhead view. It's getting close. I just, it's for the whole county. Where's Pierce in this? Where's Randall in this? That's my thoughts.
And that is why the, excuse me, to interrupt you, why the county is doing the 2/3s. They felt that they needed to contribute more.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
As a resolution, is it, do we have to do a roll call vote? It's not a resolution.
It's not a resolution.
It's a request for funding. Oh, I was reading, never mind. But from what I believe I heard, we would have had five yeses and two nos. Am I correct or incorrect?
I think you're right.
So it would pass.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'm one.
Thank you.
Resolution 2022-40. Declare surplus property. Authorize the disposal thereof. Adopt. Lori?
Yes, we have a couple more items that we need to declare surplus. Some of those coming from the police department, others coming from the park fund. So the resolution tonight is declaring those items surplus and offering them up for sale. We will do some kind of an advertisement to offer those items up for sale and take closed bids on them.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-40.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Storey. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-41. Support local government aid formula update. Adopt. John?
Thank you, Council President. I believe I described earlier in the legislative session that the state has been looking at, the legislature's been looking at an update to the formula for local government aid. And that, the League has and Coalition have been actively working on this issue. So it's definitely something that we are in support of, looking at changes as well as increasing the amount that's contributed to that. Because a large portion of our general fund operating budget comes from local government aid. It's, when I started, it was more than 50%. It hasn't gone up in accordance with our expenses and inflation. So it's something that we feel is really important that it does see an increase and that they do try to continually analyze and look at factors that are calculated in the formula to make sure that it's best serving all committees around the state.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to adopt resolution 2022-41. Supporting local government aid formula.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Conoffla. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-42. Establish fee schedule golf. Adopt. John?
Thank you, Council President. I just spoke in the work session. I had a request for consideration for a college membership rate, as well as we had talked with Sherry over the course of the winter about modifying our clubhouse rental. In the past, we've had a very nominal fee of like $25, but looking at just increasing that to $100 fee just on a per day use.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-42. Establish fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Liljagren. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Motorized trail segment. Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail. Approve. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the packet, you have a map, thank you, Mr. President. In the packet, you have a map that illustrates the motorized section of the Camp Ripley Veterans Trail through Little Falls. The Camp Ripley Trail, as my understanding is, or committee is looking at going for some bonding funds, bonding money to help fund this portion of the segment. And so the trail segment for the- And so, the trail segment for the motorized, which would be ATV snowmobiles, would continue along 18th Street up to the new water tower where there would be a trailhead. And then from there north, it would go along the 371 corridor. And so, this evening, we are asking the council for approval of this route. You see on there that the 2022 estimated construction cost is 3.85 million. Obviously, inflation is going to have a big impact on that if this gets pushed out a number of years, but that's why we've got the estimate in the year in that one. So, for that purpose, we are asking the council to approve it. We're not looking for any money, just to map the corridor so that they can go acquire some funds for the project.
What is the wish of the council? I'll move to approve the motorized trail segment of the Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? City council reports and city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything?
Mr. President, I attended Minnesota Fishing Museum celebration out at Rice Creek, and Al Barrett was there, and I know that he's had a lot to do with the fishing museum here in Little Falls. Unfortunately, I got a phone call and an email early this morning that Al passed away at the age of 99. And so, we owe many thanks to the fact that we have this fishing museum in Little Falls because Al was a true fighter for that and invested a lot of his own money, property, and other things. So, he is going to be missed. The other thing I would say is that over the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I've been in contact with Representative Creisha and Senator Zilka and with Mr. Rodamacher, working on the local option sales tax to make sure that we got on the bill so we could get ours updated, amended. And so, I haven't heard any more. They said they were going to keep us posted. John did give me a little tidbit today.
Yeah.
But that's about all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The tidbit.
Yeah. The, Council President, if I may, the bill, our request was, and the terminology is jacketed. So, they put a bill together. They sent it so that it can formally be introduced as an amendment to the Omnibus, the supplemental Omnibus tax bill. So, that was done. It's in the revisers, the revisers list. The amount that was put on the list was 30 million. We have work in the House that has it actually at 33 million, which was our resolution request. So, we believe that was just an error, and we're working on getting that corrected to the higher dollar amount as well. So, but at least on the Senate side, we're in the, we're there, which is better than not being at all.
Thank you. Any announcements? Then we will adjourn our meeting, excuse me, we will recess our meeting to Monday, May 9 at 6:30.
Six thirty?